Responders Officer Paul Elmstrand, firefighter paramedic Adam Finseth, and Officer Matthew Rugi, who were so tragically killed in the line of duty. Our sincere condolences to their families in this time of loss. You have sacrificed so much to keep our communities safe. City Manager Rodriguez would also like to say a few words at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our staff, especially our first responders, continue to be impacted by the tragedy in Burnsville. It is a sad and disturbing reminder of the risks that they face on the job. Fire and public safety staff have also been supporting Burnsville since the incident. Chief Jobisch, Assistant Chiefs Brooks and Ziskowski in fire, Lieutenant Griffin and Stanger in public safety have been working long hours in planning and helping with the funerals in today's memorial. In addition to this support, our officers and firefighters have been or will provide operational support as needed. Also Officer Dylan Schultz and Officer John Wald, they're assigned to the Lima Honor Guard, and so they've been helping with the funerals. Unfortunately, they've had to attend several other funerals in the past year. There have been, in 2023, there have been six officers in Minnesota and in neighboring states that have been killed in the line of duty. Personally, my heart goes out to the families and the staff in Burnsville. But I also feel for our staff. In keeping us safe, they face risks that we will likely never face. And that burden feels really heavy right now. Thank you. I know I normally give my report during the council manager, city manager report, but I appreciate the time today.
Thank you. And Burnsville Mayor Kautz also asked me to pass along her thanks and appreciation to all of the Richfield staff that's been coming down and helping out. They really appreciate all the support and all the outreach. Is there anyone else that wanted to say anything? All right. Again, thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to the open forum. If you are online, you can call into the open forum by dialing 1-415-655-0001. You would use webinar access code 2633-283-0960 and password 1234. Thank you to everyone who attended tonight's meeting. And we have a few reminders about forum. If you're here in person, many of you have filled out the card if you want to speak. And if you would then, when I call your name, please sign in and state your name and address. And I'll begin the timing after that, and you'll have three minutes. So just a reminder that we always say we're all neighbors here, and we want to provide a safe environment to state our opinions about municipal policies. So please stick to the issues. This is not a forum to discuss individuals. The council will be listening and taking notes, but will not be responding to the comments. This open forum is designed to hear from you, not to be a debate. Thank you. Now, I know, I believe the city manager has something that she was sent in to read, and it doesn't look like there's anybody online, but we do have one person here that has turned in a form in person. So I'm going to open the floor now to Kathleen Balavan. Sure. I can pass them on.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I come to you, my name is Kathleen. I live on 65th and Stevens. And I come before you this evening for my right to vote. And I do mean that, for my right to vote before the proposed amendments. Now, this is kind of lengthy, but what I've given you is every single minute meeting for the city's Chamber of Charter, Charter Commission. The first page is agenda meetings. And as you can see, every single minute from 2019, February 5th, 2019, to current is here for the city charter. And what I'm asking for is my right to vote because I believe that the amendments are actually changing our government from a council, a mayor council, to a council manager state. And it shows up in the, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous because of the last meeting I attended, and I got chemical there. But anyways, it started in 2019, and it ended up concurrent. What's happened here is in the amendment for, excuse me, we shifted the responsibility for our government in section 2.06, where we say that the mayor may study the operations of the city government and shall report to the city council. By switching it from shall to may, we've taken the responsibility from the mayor and placed it elsewhere. In other words, she may or may not choose to. It used to be we had to. That constitutes a mayor council center committee. Section 309 is talking about resolutions that affect the passage of such dates and so forth. They don't really care about that. But what I cared about was 313. 313 talks about electronic signatures. That again changes the authority of the city. Instead of looking at everything directly, you're now giving the authority to use your signature, whether it's at the city council level or at the city manager level. But in other words, we're losing some of our authority by electronic signatures. When we move further on down the line, we've taken away 903, 904, and 905, which had to do with our ability to respond to the city when we don't agree with the city. But more importantly, when I look at your actual, this piece here, our agenda. Okay, when we look at these things and we get down to the very last pack, the financial impact, the ordinance method of adopting chapter amendments is the only way to adopt a chapter charter amendment by ordinance. I'm saying I have a right to vote. You're changing the way the city is governed. You're changing it and giving it to the city council, excuse me, to the city manager. In other words, a council manager form of government versus a council mayor form of government. I want the council mayor, not the council manager. And we're doing it in multiple sections in here. And I gave it to you so you can look at it. All you have to do is look at all the blue, all the changes. They weren't initiated by citizens. They were initiated by staff. Citizens don't ask for this type of stuff, only staff does. If you really look at it. So I'm asking for the right to vote. I think that I have that right because we're changing the way our government. And it states in here that, in the impact, that our charter is in fact our governance. So please, look at that closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's present that wishes to speak? All right, and it looks like there's not anybody online. And then City Manager Rodriguez, you had received some written comments. And I think the rules are the same. It goes for like three minutes, so I'll be timing that as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have it as well. So if you do it, then I won't do it because I believe it is over three minutes. So this was submitted from Deb Nordmarkin. And begins, okay, I guess I would like comments read. I'm going to have to watch the replay. I'm at work. Good evening. I'm writing in regards to the new path proposals that were in the sun current. But I also have a serious concern about the way things are headed here in Richfield. Richfield homes can no longer be classified as affordable unless you get a real fixer-upper. And you, our city council, keep making it worse. Sean Hayford, Sean Hayford O'Leary claims, we elected you all in. You get to make these decisions. I highly disagree. First of all, I'm pretty sure some of you won by default. No one ran against you. Have our residents given up? I mean, oh, boy, you got a position of power, so now you have to use it. How about using those powers for good and not evil? Not proposing more spending? Sean says these decisions are his job, but I know you all passed the vote again on the Best Buy issue to the school board. I was at that school board meeting, and I heard them chastise you all for doing this to them again, the third time. I have seen in the paper these developments that don't even have secured funding that you keep allowing. What sense does that make? Why can't we save the green space we have left? So long ago, we asked to vote, we asked to vote on the Best Buy proposal. We were denied. Next year, we start paying for the deficit, and you all know it. Best Buy knows it. And then the referendum we allowed to bring funding up per student last year. That's going to hit hard, too. Inflation is at 3.2%, down a small percentage from last year. The average raise per year can't keep up with your ideas on what our city needs. Our city needs a break and better representation. I'm the only salary in my home right now. I have a lot of OT overtime just to keep up. I know you all have cool jobs with great salaries. It's time to look at, to the average person and their salaries. Just because you won that position by default does not give you free pass to put your ideas into this city. From past decisions like Best Buy that was created by Martin Kirsch, Susan Sandal, Susan Rosenberg, Gertrude Ulrich, and Crystal Stokes, the one we asked to vote on. I think it's a case in point that you should not have a prepass. The residents need you to approve your spending. Second, next, I'd like to see a report on the efforts you are making actively seeking out new businesses in Richfield. What are you doing to clean up the hub to make it more approachable for new tenants? I'm requesting a report on the activity you do to make our city more attractive to the retail industry. That's your job, too, or a city staffer. Or please put this in motion. I want to see with my eyes the actual proof you are seeking ways to entice businesses to our city. We've got lots of retail space. That's your job, too. So in a month, we, the residents, would love to see the cleanup plans and ideas to attract business. With the new laws in Minneapolis, it shouldn't be that hard to get them to the first ring suburb. It's about time we see this work that needs to be done. Now, what the city council thinks they are entitled to do because you were elected in. I honestly can't believe O'Leary used that reference. I hope we can eliminate him this next election.
We're approaching the time limit.
I hope we can eliminate him this next election because the arrogance is what got us in this tax burden bind in the first place. Third, why do we have Martin Kirsch statue, and can we eliminate it? Seems we are eliminating a lot of offensive history as of late.
And so we're over the limit.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought you said we were approaching.
We're actually a little bit past, but I let the last speaker go a little past.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anybody else for open forum? All right, so then we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the city council work session of February 13th, 2024, and the city council meeting of February 13th, 2024.
Second.
Did you move it?
I'm sorry, move it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes? All right, all in favor of approving those two sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we've approved those. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Move approval, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we've approved the agenda. Next, we're going to move on to the Richfield Police Canine Badging Ceremony. And Police Chief Henthorn is going to set the stage for us. So I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we're here to swear in two of our officers, not the two-legged variety, but the four-legged variety. Before we perform the oath of office, I just want to sort of review our Department Canine program. So some dog breeds are better suited for living in the lap of luxury, while others are made for working. A police dog, also known as a canine, must be large in stature to be strong enough to handle the rigors of police work. However, not all dogs are created equal. German Shepherds and Belgian Malinois are especially suited to be law enforcement dogs because they have specific traits. Their traits are eager to please their handler, intelligent and learn quickly, thrive on being rewarded for obedient behavior, courageous in dangerous situations, protective by nature, have a superior sense of smell, and don't shy away from being aggressive when necessary. Police Canines have been a longstanding partner of our Richfield police officers. Our police Canines usually serve on the force between six to nine years. Richfield's newest Canines are Riggs, a German Shepherd born and raised in Slovakia; Orion, a German Shepherd and Belgian Malinois crossbreed, also from Slovakia. When both dogs are around one year old, they're flown to the United States to begin their career as police Canines. In January 2023, the Canines were assigned to their respective Richfield police officer handlers, McCabe, Storia, and Haley Quambek. In March, the Canine teams attended training in certification school in Buffalo, Minnesota. Training included obedience, tracking, apprehension, and drug detection. The Canine teams completed their training and began working their normal patrol duties this last June. When not working their normal patrol shift, our Canines go home with their respective handlers. Due to living and working together every day, the Canines and their handlers develop a deep bond with one another. With a solid partnership and friendship, the Canine and their officer can perform truly heroic acts that neither could ever be done alone. A Canine program requires significant time, dedication, and financial resources. I want to send my deep and sincere gratitude to the community members that have made donations in support of this great program. The community's generosity and thoughtfulness is sincerely appreciated. One of our main donors, Christine Blake from Frenchmans, has showed continuous support of the program throughout the Canine career that we've had on the Richfield Police Department. And her support has been greatly appreciated and has helped us, again, to deploy a tandem Canine team. So with that, if I could have Canine Orion and Riggs come to the front? If you raise your right hand? Repeat after me, aye?
Aye.
State your dog's name. Do you solemnly swear? Do you support the Constitution and the laws of the United States? We'll go a little bit faster. State of Minnesota? And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Richfield. And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me as a Canine police officer of the city of Richfield to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations. As you can see, they get a little excited when they're in public.
Congratulations and thank you. And thank you to everyone who came out tonight and support. All right, we had a large number of people in the audience, so they're taking a moment to go out into the hall to continue the celebrations after the badging ceremony. So we'll turn it over at this point to City Manager Rodriguez for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of an agreement between the Hennepin County Human Services and Public Health Department and the City of Richfield Department to participate in the Joint Community Police Partnership, or JCPP, program from January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2026. Item B, consider extending American Rescue Plan Act funding contracts with Veep from May, I'm sorry, from March 31st, 2024 to June 30th, 2024, and with the Conflict Resolution Center to September 30th, 2024. Item C, consider approval of the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a contract with Valley Paving, Inc. for the Safe Routes to School 71st Street sidewalk project in the amount of $150,820, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to $175,000 without further city council consideration. Item D, consider approval of a resolution authorizing execution of Mindot Agreement Number 1055391 for the dispersment of state general obligation bond funding for the 71st Street Safe Routes to School sidewalk project. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've approved the consent calendar. Next, we're going to move on to item number five, which is a public hearing. And I'm going to turn that over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. And this will be a public hearing. So if anybody is watching this live, they should call in using the instructions at the first page of the agenda. This is a public hearing in consideration of the adoption of a resolution specifying the use of funds from the Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant allocation for 2024 and authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements. Our Community Development Block Grants, or Block Grant Funding, CDPG, is annually awarded to Hennepin County on a formula basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The county, in turn, allocates a portion of these funds to the city of Richfield to address local needs related to affordable housing, community development, and public services. The city has historically allocated these funds to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for programming. Staff is proposing to use the city's 2024 direct allocation of $177,423.11, estimated as follows. First, $108,432.11 will go to the Deferred Loan Rehabilitation Program. $69,000 will go to the First Time Home Buyer Down Payment Assistance Program. The Deferred Loan Program provides no interest, 30-year loans up to $30,000 to low-income homeowners to address health, safety, and property maintenance needs. The program is administered for the city by the county. There is currently a significant waiting list for these funds. The First Time Home Buyer Down Payment Assistance Program is aimed at low- and moderate-income first-time home buyers who are looking to buy homes in Richfield. It provides no interest deferred loans of up to $20,000 to use towards down payment and closing costs. Does staff have anything to add prior to the public hearing?
No.
All right, thank you. So the public hearing is now open. If anybody would like to address the council on this matter, they may do so now. Or if there are any call-ins, I assume management almost wants to let us know.
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt the usual flow. I just noticed we have a slight number mix-up in both the staff report and the resolution. In one place, it says $423, and in another, it says $432. Just want to make sure we have the right number in all the places.
Councilmember Whalen, can you, can you point us to where you're saying that?
So in the, in the staff report, which is page, where are our page numbers? 71, the introduction above the two bullet points says $177,423.11, and then our two numbers.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, the $108,000 has $432, and the other is a round number.
Yep.
And the same mix-up happens again in the resolution within the little table. That our, our numbers don't actually add up correctly.
Could the city manager or the city attorney comment on if that is significant enough to cause any issues?
Oh, Mayor, councilmembers. Libby Cantor, sitting in for city attorney, Mary Teigen. I would say that's just a typo, and we can correct it afterwards. I don't think it's a big deal.
Thank you for pointing that out so we can get it fixed and corrected.
All right, well, as we haven't had any interest in the public hearing, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next.
All right. And Acting City Attorney, is, can we take these in one motion? Do you know, or should these just be separate for clarity?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, you can take them in one motion.
Thank you. I will move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the use of funds for the 2024 Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program and authorize execution of a subrecipient agreement with Hennepin County for any required third-party agreements.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just always appreciate every time this, this program comes up, that it just, it creates such an incredible opportunity for folks that live and work in Richfield. And not everybody needs to own a home, but at, at the, especially at the federal level and at the state level, we have privileged homeownership as a vehicle for creating wealth, transferring wealth. If you, if you live in a home and have a mortgage, you live in a federally subsidized home. That the interest rates you don't have to pay and the capital gains that you, that you get, you don't have to pay taxes on typically result in tens of thousands of dollars in benefits. And if you're home, if you're unfortunate enough not to pay, not to be able to pay your mortgage, instead of being evicted promptly, you have at a minimum probably seven to eight months and sometimes more to, to put your, to either find an alternative way to finance your home or find other housing. So it's a really powerful tool, and I really appreciate that staff in our city have made a priority for making this an opportunity for new homeowners in Richfield. So, thank you.
I would echo those sentiments. And also, I think the rehabilitation program is also very valuable. So they're both wonderful programs. Any other comments or questions? City Manager Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Manager, Director, apologies. Urban said that it is actually $177,423. So that is correct in the, although the number, the number-one deferred loan, home loan program should be corrected to $423.11, the total CDPG allocation is correct.
All right, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? All right, then we will put both motions before us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we've passed those. Next, we'll move on to agenda item six, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the approval of the second reading of ordinances amending section 925, nuisances, to include a new provision relating to flexible dumpsters and 925: Nuisances, to include a new provision relating to flexible dumpsters and adding that a violation of Section 1305.27, Subdivision 5, Yards, and Subdivision 6, vehicle parking and storage limitations and requirements, is nuisance conduct and subject to a repeat nuisance fee. The city has seen an increase in complaints regarding flexible dumpsters being left on properties for months at a time, as well as yard parking and cars parked on properties that exceed the four that are currently allowed by city code. Proposed ordinance amendments would help alleviate these violations and also impose a repeat nuisance fee for yard parking and number of vehicles allowed on a property. The First Reading of this proposed ordinance was heard by the City Council on February 13th, 2024. Does staff have anything to add on this item?
We're available for questions.
Okay. And this one is in three separate motions, so I would first move that we approve the Second Reading of an Ordinance Amending Section 925 of the Richfield City Code to include a provision relating to flexible dumpsters.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, go ahead.
I'll just mention, I appreciate the change from staff to clarify some of the dumpster distances. There was, the way it was written before would cause issues for some properties, but I believe the way they revised it addresses that and makes sure that people are being, you know, good neighbors about these things, but it's still possible to serve all properties with those. And just, I thank you to staff for addressing both of these issues, because they, they affect the, the image of your neighborhood. They, it's a, it's unfortunate when people are, you know, abuse those, those things, and it hurts the neighborhood, so I think it's important that we continue to enforce those issues, and I'm glad to support ways to make that more practical to enforce.
All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've passed, passed the first of the three motions.
And second, I would approve the Second Reading of an Ordinance providing that a violation of City Code Section 1305.27, Subdivision 5 and 6, is nuisance conduct subject to a repeat nuisance fee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've passed that section. And finally?
Third, would approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of these two said ordinances.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've passed those parts of the ordinance. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and before I read the, the executive summary, I just want to, to say a, a special thanks to our commission members and our staff, who really put a lot of hours into, into this process, which, and I even appreciate that citizens brought, brought, brought a record of, of all the times that community members have come together to meet, and that this is the fruit of really intentional and thorough dialogue of people that did not always agree, and to reach consensus. And I, we, we didn't talk politics once, but we talked about, I, I know, because I know the people, there were just very different ideologies that were represented in that conversation. I was really grateful to be a part of that experience. So with that, it's considered the best practices to periodically review the charter to ensure the document is still relevant and functional. And beginning in 2022, the Richfield Charter Commission, the Commission, began a review of the current charter. Staff worked with Commission to identify areas where the charter could be updated to bring in line, updated to bring it in line with statute and best practices. There were also several general grammar and spelling changes that staff updated during this process. The Commission has identified and recommends amendments to the current charter. These amendments simplify and clarify language in the charter, clarify the council's and the mayor's authority in times of emergency, and add consistency to the state law, expand the city council's authority to approve public purpose expenditures, and update the document to reflect the current community conditions. The city attorney drafted the proposed amendments consistent with the Commission's direction and feedback. The recommended amendments are included in the attached documents. After many meetings over the course of many months, the Charter Commission formally acted on December 5th, 2023, to recommend the amendment for adoption by the city council. The Charter Commission sent a letter to the Richfield City Council transmitting the proposed amendments to the, to Richfield City Char, uh, to the Richfield City Charter, to the Richfield City Council. The council accepted the Commission's recommendations and authorized publication of a notice of a public hearing at its meeting on February 13th. The proposed amendments are being forwarded for consideration for adoption by ordinance pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 410.12, Subdivision 7. There is a public hearing scheduled for the March 12th, 2024 city council meeting. And so with that, I would, staff have anything to add? I would move that we approve the First Reading of an Ordinance amending the current city charter based on the Charter Commission's recommended actions, and schedule a Second Reading and hold a public hearing on March 12th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Hayfer Leary?
I don't want to get into it in, into detail, but a community member raised some questions about this, and I realize the city manager will likely respond to that at the next meeting, but on a very basic level, two, two questions that I would just like to clarify as we're discussing this. We are not changing the form of government from the current structure. Correctly, currently have council manager, and we will continue to have council manager. And I believe the, the, I would, I can just say, I don't, I don't need to ask the manager to say it. The intent of changing shall and may was to improve clarity on exactly what was required. So in the example the resident spoke to, I believe, argue, you could argue the current language says that if, if the mayor has not investigated staff and reported to us that she is not doing her duty, which is not necessarily what we want, we want the ability to do it. So I believe it was very thoughtfully and carefully reviewed, including by our city attorney, as to the language of shall, may, et cetera. So I, I believe those concerns are, are addressed, and then I imagine we'll discuss in more detail at our next meeting.
All right, any other comments or questions? I want to extend thanks to all of the Charter Commission members. I know there have been lots of meetings and lots of discussions, and also send our well wishes to Chair Kirsch, and also thank you to all the staff for everyone who is, and that has worked on this. Any other discussion? Councilmember Whalen?
I just wanted to say, for, for folks who are curious about this, it is, it is largely a, a lot of non-significant updates. There's a lot of cross-outs and changes that most of them are clarifying when we said shall, if that is will or may. But there are, and it is true, our form of government is not changing. There are a couple of the changes that are slightly more significant, that if folks are interested and wanted to look into it, that we talked extensively about what to do when there's a vacancy, and how often, or not how often, just when a special election is warranted or not. And then there was quite significant conversation about the emergency powers of the mayor, which had come up during the pandemic, and clarifying some of that. I think most of the other changes really are pretty minor, but wanted to just be transparent about those.
All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Just to confirm with our city attorney, any change to the charter requires a unanimous vote, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct, yes.
And that's not this vote, or is that this vote also? It's, it's the ultimate change, not whether or not we're going to have the hearing, is that correct?
That is correct, although Mary did say she would appreciate a unanimous vote, vote for both, because she's not sure how the court would rule on that exactly.
Well, 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 very good. The, the desires of our city attorney notwithstanding, it, just again, for folks that haven't been a part of the process, I think on all the substantive issues that Councilmember Whalen talked about, there was not universal agreement, and really significant conversations that were even passionate at moments. And so I just, I want to reflect on how powerful, this seems boring, but this is a really big deal, that people that think differently in government sat around a table and said, in order to move forward, we all have to agree. And we don't know how we're going to vote here, but based on the conversations that we had, we reached consensus. And so I'm really proud of everybody that participated, and, and it's, I, we can't take democracy for granted, and I'm really grateful for this process.
All right, Management Analyst Swanson.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to add one thing kind of at that point. We have met more in the last two and a half years reviewing this document than the Charter Commission met in the prior seven years plus. So I really want to thank the president and all the members of the Charter Commission. This was something we had a conversation with them in 2021, said, is this something you want to do and take on, and they, they fully committed to it. I think it was a bigger lift than they expected it. It really hasn't been updated since 1964. So the fact that they were able to kind of do a comprehensive look and update was really kind of a testament to their work and commitment to this community. So really want to thank them for that work, and sort of what the ultimate document is really shows is that those year-long conversations we had, many of them which were very tough, both at the council level and at the commission level, so really, really cool work done there.
And a special thanks to Management Analyst Swanson, who did the deep dive historically to look up the original documents from the 1960s, so, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving the First Reading and scheduling the Second Reading and the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed those. Next, we'll move on to Item Number Eight, Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is to consider the approval of agreements with nonprofit organizations to provide social services to the City of Richfield and authorize the city manager to execute agreements with those agencies. In November 2023, staff distributed a request for proposals for social services to nonprofit agencies, serving the City of Richfield for services to be provided in 2024. The 2024 city budget includes funding for organizations that provide social services that are deemed to be of benefit to the city and the community in general. The 2024 budget includes $78,100 for this purpose. A total of six proposals were received from the following agencies. Cornerstone Advocacy Services, the Family Partnership, VEEP, which is volunteers enlisted to assist people, Loaves &amp; Fishes, Senior Community Services, Reach for Resources Incorporated, formerly Trail, Transportation Research to Aid Independent Living. The proposals represent a wide variety of social services offered to Richfield residents. The organizations requested a total of 97, total amount of $97,500, exceeding the city's available funding by $19,400. Two Richfield residences, residents, two staff members and one council member comprised the committee that reviewed the proposals and made funding recommendations. The review committee's recommendations took into account the type of services to be provided, the target populations to be served, and past performance of the social service agency. All six of the proposals were recommended for funding. The following table details the review committee's recommendations. For Cornerstone, the proposal request for 2024 was $20,000. 2024 recommendation was $18,000. VEEP was $25,000, recommendation $25,000. Loaves &amp; Fishes, $8,000, 2024 recommendation $8,000. The Family Partnership, $30,000, 2024 recommendation $12,600. And Senior Community Services, $10,000, $10,000 for recommendation for 2024. And for Reach for Resources, formerly Trail, proposal for this year was $4,500.
Thank you, Mayor. I, two, two hats off for folks, which are most folks, did not have the opportunity to join us in our work session in the room behind us. We had an opportunity to, to meet with staff and review how, how the, that staff has been compensated with a comprehensive review that Baker Tilly provided. It is just an incredible reminder, and I said this to our staff, and I'm glad to say it to our, our community. Having, having lived here for, for most of my life, and, and pleased to be the third generation of Richfielders, our city is in better shape than it was a generation ago because of the investments that, that we've made. And if it's a great place to live, it's because of your neighbors, but it's also because of our staff, and so I want to say thank you to them. And I also really want to take a moment, and appreciate it, that we are able to have a moment of silence for the, the officers and the firefighter, paramedics, first responders that, that lost his life and lost their lives. But I'd be remiss if we didn't take a moment and thank our officers and our firefighters and our first responders, and we hope they never have to make that sacrifice. But we're, I'm grateful that, that, that they're willing and they continue to serve us, and I want to, I want to recognize that and take our, take my hat off.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayfer Leary?
I will just mention, well, first, a hats off to our Transportation Commission, who always spends a lot of time on different issues, but I've been the liaison, and they had a lengthy meeting at the beginning of the month to talk about the Nicolet Avenue reconstruction. It was very interactive. They had a big, like, plotter sheet that, like, took up the whole Bartholomew Room that we meet in, so looking at the initial layout ideas of what we might do. And tomorrow, those ideas will be brought to the broader public. 4:30 to 6:30 at the community center, there'll be an open house, and we hope to hear, hear from lots of folks and have some fun, interactive ideas, lots of different things that they're considering and that we need feedback on.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, and, yes, I'd like to give a hats off to the Park and Rock Department. We've recently, if not all of us, have received a booklet from them regarding the activities that are coming up in the spring and summer. There's a lot of variety out there, and for all ages, from infants on up, so we look forward to taking advantage of some of those activities.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. Related to that, on the very back of that-
Thank you, Mayor. Related to that, on the very back of that brochure, wanted to highlight, the Community Services Commission just met and was celebrating, and also highlighting the new recreation fee assistance program, which, again, there's information on their brochure, but also it's online if you have already misplaced that or recycled it. But I just really want to highlight this program is for folks, lower-income folks, to not have cost be a barrier to being part of our recreation programs, that it is half-off season passes to our pool, free snowshoe and cross-country ski rental at Wood Lake, free open skating and skate rental at the ice arena, 75% off if you want a community garden plot. And then, above and beyond all that, you get, each family member receives $50 credit to go toward any remaining costs for any recreation program. And I particularly want to lift up and thank staff for making sure, there's a lot of income-based programs where there are so many hoops to jump through to prove your income level and like bring, I don't know, 12 different kinds of documents, that I think they've really streamlined this. And so if you are someone that has considered this program, but you're like, oh my gosh, I don't want to apply for another thing, it is a very simple, straightforward process. And so I would encourage you, if you're interested in some of these programs and think you might qualify, to check it out.
Thank you. I was asked to announce that there's going to be a listening session, excuse me, for the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership is sponsoring this, and it's going to include policymakers, myself, Hennepin County Commissioner Debbie Gottel, State Representative Michael Howard, and State Senator Melissa Wicklund. And it's going to be March 7th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the Richfield Public Schools Boardroom. And so the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership would really like to encourage the public to attend and to speak with policymakers and talk to them about the issues that they have. So I just wanted to put that out there. Also, I was fortunate, I was invited to go over to the Richfield Dual Language School. They're really highlighting having people come in to read to the kids, and so I was able to read with a third and a fourth grade classroom. And I'm always impressed when you get together with the kids with the questions they come up with after the reading. So they had a variety of very well-thought-out questions, so they're pretty awesome. So shout out to the students of RDLS. Also, a shout out to our community members. We're meeting tonight on a Wednesday, because last night was precinct caucuses, and so thank you to everybody who attended their precinct caucus and talked to their neighbors and whichever political party they're affiliated with. And since we were talking about recreation programs, I want to do a shout out, I was over at the community center, and I noticed they have flyers there for day trips that they do. So if you're interested in going to things like the Paramount Center for the Arts, Sinatra My Way is playing, there's the MIA Art in Bloom is going on, and there's also a trip to the Carlos Creek Winery. So if you want to participate in those day trips, you can find out more information at the community center. It's a great program. And finally, I wanted to thank you all for making it available so that I could go to the League of Minnesota Cities training. And so got together with people from across the city, or across the state, rather, with other council members and mayors, and talked about issues, and had a lot of valuable learning, and I appreciate that opportunity for learning. So with that, thank you to everyone. Is there anything else that we have before us? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned.